Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Marion Commission Meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting for April the 8th, 2019. And as always, next on the agenda is the invocation. Commissioner Bob Moore will do the introduction. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor.
You are.
I'd like to welcome my friend Leroy Spivey. He's been a pastor around here many years and he has been with us once or twice before and we're pleased to have him again. If you would rather Leroy step to the microphone and give us a word of wisdom and pray for us.
Thank you, Honorable Moore, and it's good to be with y'all again and Honorable Mayor and all the city commissioners and all the guests and all that are here. I've asked someone tonight, well, the most controversial thing is going to be on the agenda and they said, "That's it tonight, it just kind of takes will be quiet." Everything is just common, so I'll have about thirty minutes for the devotion. Leadership, leadership, leadership is this. If you are a leader and you look around and nobody is following you, you're really just taking a walk.
That's right.
Somebody said that, I don't know. But anyway, each of you, each of you, talking mostly to the commissioners and our distinguished mayor and all of you that I elected, you are in the position of leadership tonight because your constituents saw something in you that gave them hope. Hope that you would help us have a better city, a better community, a better fellowship among all of us, harmony and going forward. You know, it's quite amazing when you look at the work of God, if you believe in divine providence, how the good Lord puts things together. For there is a reason that you are in the position you are in tonight. In 1st Corinthians, Chapter 12, at verse 32, we find these words. "And all the children of Isacal," which was one of the twelve tribes of Israel, "which were men," and we could say women, "but men that had understanding of the times," people that had understanding of the times, "to know what Israel ought to do." Do you ever come to a place sometime in your business that you really don't really know what to do? Well, there's wonderful answers that's found in that good old book we call the Bible. Answers that are given as to how to govern and how to lead our nation, our state, our local cities and our communities. Those answers are found in God's Word. Jeremiah 29:7 tells us this, speaking to leaders, leaders just like you are. "Seek peace for the city," is what it says. "Seek peace for the city and pray for it, for in the peace thereof shall you have peace." So it's truly saying if we work together to have peace in our community, we ourselves will have abundant peace because it just passes down to all of us. Proverbs 29:2 says this. "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked men rule, the people mourn." No wonder Psalms 33:12 says this. "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." Now, in closing, before we pray, I thank each of you. I know in my heart that all of us want to see our city prosper, go forward. We can't stay in the past. Years ago, right across the Sims Funeral Home, there was a place, my brother-in-law told me one time, that sold, many of you won't remember what I'm talking about, but sold horse collars, mule collars, all the paraphernalia that you used on the farm. Well, they don't have that anymore because there's no demand for that. But if we try to live in the past, we would never go forward to enjoy the better things that's planned for us. So God wants us to prosper. He wants our city safe and to go forward in every way. And the Lord's chosen you as leaders. So you pray about every decision and you work together in the best unity you can. We don't all agree on everything, but in the end, we can come to friendly disagreements if we have to. But then we put together what's best for our community, not for us particularly, but for our community. And when you have made decisions and done your best, don't go home and worry about that. Go home in peace because you have done your best. Put it in the hands of the Lord and be assured that you are appreciated and your work is not in vain. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the words that are given to us. They will answer so much of our world's problems, even our local communities. 2 Corinthians 7:14, we're in 90. "If my people," and we are your people, Lord, "if my people that are called by my name shall humble themselves," we're not talking about unbelievers and other folks, "us, we that believe, we humble ourselves and pray secure thy face, earn from our weevils, then you will hear from heaven and forgive our sins, and you will heal our land." And how we need a healing in America and all over this world. Thank you, Lord, for these group of men and women that have given themselves to be servants in Christ's name this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Greater thanks for that.
Thanks, sir.
Next on the agenda, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And as always, we will be led by the Coffee County Navy Junior ROTC. And tonight, we have the distinct pleasure of having Ensign Marino to lead us in the pledge. If you would, please stand and face the block.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please be seated.
Thank you. I was trying to have a sneak peek at the agenda and next on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda.
Second.
It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the introduction and recognition of our newly appointed mayor's youth council members. And we have Ms. Boulder that is going to do the honors. How are you doing in your flowery dress?
Thank you. I feel flowery. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, it is a pleasure and an honor that, believe it or not, it has been one year since we started the Mayor's Youth Council. And on the next commission meeting on April 27th, 2nd, at 7:00 PM, we will be installing new junior mayor and commissioner. Also, I just wanted, of course, we couldn't have done this without my sidekick, Ms. Dinitra Williams. She has really, she's really been the head of this. She's done an awesome job with this. These young people that we, that has been appointed to the council went through during an essay. They were interviewed. We had a board that interviewed them. And so they didn't come through just to be coming through. They had to work at it. So tonight, we're just going to let you, we're going to let them introduce themselves, tell them a little bit about themselves and let them start with our newly elected mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Samantha Martin. I am a upcoming senior at Coffee High School. Last year, I was, I was serving on the youth council as junior commissioner for Ward 5. This year, I'm proud to be serving as junior mayor. The youth council has helped me improve a lot. I learned a lot. I would, the first meeting I came here, I was like, "What are they doing? What is a motion?" By the time I got done, I was the first one to motion. I would like to thank all of you for the opportunity, especially you two ladies. You're great role models. And thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Amelia Crockett. I'm a defense attorney with Team Court. And this is my first time doing the Mayor's Youth Council. And I think it is an honor to serve the city. And I'm also an upcoming sophomore at Coffee High. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's the senior term.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jaleen DeBro. I'm thirteen years old. I am an upcoming ninth grader at the Ninth Grade Academy. I served as a juror on Team Court and I'm excited about being with Mayor's Youth Council.
All right.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Candace Pace. I am an upcoming senior of the class of 2020. And I am so happy to be given this opportunity to work with the Mayor's Youth Council. And I'd like to thank Ms. Wannetta and Ms. Dinitra for this amazing opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashton Yates and I'm an upcoming tenth grader at Coffee High School. I'm so glad to be a part of this Mayor's Youth Council. I thank Ms. Dinitra and Ms. Wannetta for allowing me to get on this youth council.
Hey, everybody. I'm a part of the Mayor's Youth Council and also a part of Team Court. And my name is Angel Jackson and I'm an upcoming senior, no, oh my God. I'm an upcoming ninth grader.
You want to get it real fast.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tyree Wilson. I'm an upcoming senior. I'm glad to be a part of the Mayor's Youth Council. I thank Ms. Dinitra and Ms. Wannetta for giving me this opportunity to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's also our bailiff at our Team Court. We have just, one of our Team, Mayor's Youth Council couldn't be here, her father, she's taking care of her father tonight, and it's Paulina Escobar. She was the junior city manager last year. This year, she's serving as mayor pro temp along with being our public information specialist. And so they had to do essays, so I've asked Jessica if she would to come introduce herself and I wanted her to read her essay to you all.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Suarez and I am an upcoming senior at the Coffee High School. After high school, you know, I want to study to be a lawyer.
Oh, okay.
This is my essay. The end of 2018 was a time where I caused a lot of disappointment, more than ever before, and let's just say it was not the first time. High school has been stressful for me. I'm not the smartest or the most well-behaved, but I have a goal to accomplish. I have something to prove. My family struggles more than they should and with me constantly making mistakes, it does, it doesn't make things any better. After the incident I had in November, I thought that I had lost it all, my scholarship, parents' trust, et cetera. Then I realized I had other opportunities ahead of me. When I found out about the youth council, I saw that as a way of becoming someone better. Joining the Mayor's Youth Council will be a way for me to try, to try other things and let me see other things other than a screen at home. Although school is stressful, I do want to go to college and accomplish many things. There's times where I do great and others where I just come plummeting down and I want to better myself and do better with school. I have gotten into some trouble before, but I have always been respectful. When I was younger, I never really knew what I wanted to do in myself or what kind of future I wanted to have. I like to fight for what's right and I do whatever it takes to do what's right, especially now. I decided that the way my personality is set, I would want to become a lawyer, a criminal defense attorney and an immigration attorney, to be exact. I think I would do good, but I know, but I know I was stressed a lot. I might even have a couple mental breakdowns along the way.
No.
But I know that in the end, it will be worth it, even when I see the smile on my parents' face. I want to finish high school and head to college in Valdosta and hopefully go to law school out of state. I want to make my parents proud and show everyone who doubted me that I could do it. Right now, I am a student at the alternative school in Coffee County. I am not proud of it, but this did teach me a lesson. I was in the NJROTC program for two years and I plan on joining again my senior year. I also want to be a part of the Mayor's Youth Council. It's something new and I think it will be good for me. I feel like if I was a part of the youth council, it will keep me busy and that way I won't have time to be involved with bad influences and I can start doing something better for myself. I'm hoping for this to get me more involved with other students that want to do great things and lead me in the right direction. I've never been a part of anything like this and I feel like it's time for a change.
Great job.
And that's what this is all about. This is what, this is what makes me coming to work worthwhile.
Yes.
It's the citizens too, but it's these young people and they make a difference. On April the 19th, which is Good Friday, and we did invite the mayor and commission along with some department heads. We will be having a banquet for our outgoing, the ones that's going out. We have Savannah Cothran, who was our mayor pro temp. She will be, she's a senior this year, so she will be leaving us, but she does still work with us on our advisory committee. And I know that's Good Friday, but we picked, after we picked that date, it was good for the kids and that's what it's all about. So we do understand if you all cannot make it, but we encourage you on this year for our mayor commission to please, please engage and be a part of our youth council, even be a part of our Team Court, because this is how most of our kids came through, being Mayor Youth Council, by doing Team Court. And it has worked. We've probably took about maybe twelve kids through Team Council and we've only had to send one back so far. So it's working. So again, I thank you all for a good meeting, work session on today, because they will be coming to, to look at you guys. And, and they know that as long as there are sins, people being professional and respectful, and that's what we want to teach our young people, that it's okay to disagree, but let's respect one another. And tonight, I want to thank you all for doing just that.
Thank you, Ms. Wannetta.
I want to make a comment here about the Mayor's Youth Council and Team Court. Ms. Escobar, is that correct?
Suarez.
Suarez. You were my appointment, correct?
Yes, sir.
The other Ms. Williams, what's her first name?
Jessica.
Jessica. Jessica called me and said, "Hey, we have a young lady that said that the mayor talked to me and we just want to know if you can actually meet with this young lady and talk with her." So we found the date and we met over at the Chamber of Commerce and we talked for about an hour, just about life, the things that I had went through in order to have some level of success that God blessed me with. And I tell individuals all the time, if I was in high school at the present time with the way I was, I would be in alternative school, if I was in school at all. I do think that our children deserve positive role models. I think that we also have to create an environment where they can be successful and be themselves. I will say this right here, I've already had a little meeting with the Mayor's Youth Council and it was a very sensitive issue, but listen to me, they didn't hold no punches. They brought it, they brought it full force. There was, there was passion, there was direction, there was understanding, there was consensus of the, of the decision. And what I appreciate most of all is they understood going forward what the potential consequences of that decision was. So my thing is this right here, the Mayor's Youth Council in Team Court, especially Team Court, I know I would have been in Team Court, no doubt about that, I would have been in Team Court, but sometimes when you crush a child and you take away options, they stay there. When I left Douglas in September of 81, I turned down a full ride to go to Albany State and went into the military. That was a hard decision, but it ended up being a great decision because I needed some structure and I needed some understanding. And the only thing that the army taught me was that my grandmother knew what she was talking about, both of them, and my mom and dad and my aunts and uncles. Hopefully, we will be able to further our youth council and expand it. And Team Court, I would encourage everyone to come to Team Court. It can get pretty interesting. So with that being said, Ms. Wannetta, I appreciate what you've done. I appreciate our Ram in the Bush because she came at the chat and chew and said, "I just want to get involved. I want to do something. I just want to do something." And that started that relationship and I am indebted to you. But most importantly, I'm indebted to our youth just for stepping out and taking the responsibility. And the young lady over there that's 13, oh yeah, it's all, it's all, she's not bad, okay? She's not bad. Next on the agenda, we have the second reading of DINE post-certified code enforcement officers.
We said.
My mistake. If you would, please strike item number six from the agenda. So next on the agenda, we, as we move forward, would be items placed on the consent agenda. Excuse me. As always, we will turn that over to our city manager.
Mayor Commission, we have two items being brought forward on the consent agenda tonight. One is item one from the work session, approval of the March 20th, 2019 minutes. And then item three from the work session, the approval of the street closures for 2019.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. At this time, I entertain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda will be work session items brought forward.
We have two items being brought forward tonight. First is item two, discuss the appointments to the Douglas Coffee County Planning Commission, Georgia Henderson, the Community Development Director.
The recommendation is that the three vacant positions on the Douglas Coffee County Planning Commission be advertised for a period of two weeks with the recommendation for appointment being made at the April 22nd commission meeting. Individuals interested in serving on the planning commission should contact the office of our city clerk. You can find the application online to download it as well. Please get those applications in before noon on April 22nd.
Thank you. Next item will be item four, discuss the library, library board vacancy. It's the recommendation to advertise the two continuing vacancies on local media for an ongoing period until we have at least two people applying for the library board. We've already ran this once. We had no takers for that, so we're coming back tonight to ask y'all permission to continue to run this. At the same time, I would like to throw out the idea that people, you know, taking interest in some of these committees and commissions or whatever, we are having a hard time on some of these committees, filling them, and we just ask y'all to look at these vacancies and see what interests you have and apply for those.
Thank you very much.
That's all the items being brought forward.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next on the agenda is the staff comments and before, come on up, Ms. Henderson. I just want to say something about the junk drop off. I had a citizen that was just absolutely elated that they have removed everything from their yard and it didn't cost them a penny.
And that's what it's all about.
And that the yard looks good, she got more room than she ever had in her entire life. And she wanted to say that that was a great idea.
Well, that's a great segue. I think you need to explain when you say that they have removed everything from the yard.
Oh, the citizen themselves removed it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We got a place for it. We ain't got nothing to get.
Yeah, there's no gun to get.
And that's what we hope that these monthly, we call it junk free residential, junk drop offs, create that synergy around the homes and people put sweat equity in cleaning up around your own place, making it look good, taking pride in where you live. And for the month of April, we have a triple, we have three. We've already had the one this past weekend. There's another one, I'm looking over here for Mike, he's not there, but there's another Kevin's over there, so you tell me if I'm wrong, because my blood now told me, I couldn't even believe it. But there's one coming up on the 20th, which is the normal one, the first and third Saturday, but during Georgia Cities Week, we're going to have another one on April the 27th, because it will be the end of the week for the spring junk free week. So I get into the announcements. On April the 13th, the Tiny Tot Easter Egg Hunt hosted by our Douglas Parks Recreation Department will be held at 11 a.m. sharp at J.C. Avenue Municipal Park. Just want to announce that the City of Douglas offices will be closed on Friday, April the 19th in observance of the Good Friday holiday. Also, as I said, the residential junk drop off will be on April the 20th and the 27th. We have a full flyer, I know you all can't see this, but I just want to say of our city events that's going to take place on April 21st to the 27th, that is Georgia Cities Week. That is the time the cities throughout the whole state of Georgia celebrate who we are as a city and promote our city services that we provide. The theme this year is true colors and we're going to show our true colors by displaying an array of our services and celebration of our customers. Just to name it, you can go to our website, download the flyer. We're going to have the spring junk free week, that's going to be the entire week. So everyone who, just, just take that week off if you need to, get your home really cleaned up, because the whole week from 8 until, is it 12? It's longer than that. Yeah, during the week. To 4:30, I thought so, during the week. And then on Saturday, it will be on that 27th from 8 until 12. Our 311 customer care in city clerk office along with our utilities department, they're going to have an appreciation for the whole month of April. When you come to City Hall, you can register and they're going to do some drawings for some door prizes along with five customers will be winners of $100 discount on the utility. So five people will be selected for that and that drawing will not be held until May the 3rd. Some of the other things, just to highlight, we've heard the introduction of our new Mayor's Youth Council tonight. I congratulate you all, you, for being selected for that youth council. But on April the 22nd, they will officially be sworn in on that night, so that's going to be a great night. The Community Development Department along with our GIC committee, that's the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing Initiative, we're going to host the first time ever Community Housing and Resource Fair. And that is going to be held on that Friday, April the 26th as a flyer with detailed events. But there are going to be some giveaways, free credit counseling, people can sign up for free energy audits. Someone's going to be there from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs talking about the first time home fires program, the Georgia Dream Program and the Georgia Safe Home Program. So Realtors going to be there, some bankers, so we really want the citizens to come out. That's on Friday, April the 26th from 9 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Roundtree Center. Those, like I say, those are the highlights. There's some other activities taking place, but I just want to call those out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have comments from the mayor and commission. Let's, again, let's try to hang out with the three minutes and be mindful, we do have our youth council present. Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, start us out, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. First thing that comes to my mind, everybody is, well, most people in the city are aware we had an incident. Was it, it's been a week ago now, just about. We had a, uh, a tanker truck filled with anhydrous ammonia flipped over at probably the busiest intersection in the county, which is located in the Sukklemus and Douglas there, you know, Wendy's and, uh, the school board property. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody, our first responders, our fire department, police department, and all those other agencies that assisted them in taking care of that situation. Uh, from my understanding, it was handled very professionally. Uh, we're, um, fortunate that we have a hazmat team located here. So, all those resources were put into play, all that training that they do on a regular basis was put into play. And thank goodness, it wasn't anything worse than it was and it could've been. But they won't, you know, they took all the precautions they needed. We appreciate all this cooperation that we received from our citizens in handling that situation. Um, I'd like to, I'd like also to echo my thanks to Mr. Nitra and, uh, Ms. Wagnetta for their work with our Youth Council. Welcome to our new council members on board. Um, I said this last time, and it's just a true thing. Leadership is action, not position. You know, we hold positions within organizations, within our families, within our communities, our churches. But leadership is what we do. It's who we are. So, don't ever feel like you gotta wait around after or see some kind of title or to belong to certain this or that to be able to get out there and lead. You know, do what you can, do the right thing. Somebody's always watching you, whether you believe it or whether you, whether you see it or whether you don't. Somebody's watching you. So, we, we welcome you aboard. Um, and thinking about some of the things that we deal with on a regular basis as elected officials, we know what our climate is like politically in this country right now. We've discussed it in here. Um, I think my personal commitment would be what's got us to this point is not only, since the founding of our country, we've disagreed about issues. There's nothing wrong with that. That's what adults do. Everybody on this commission comes from a variety of backgrounds, um, in our, uh, our management here in the city. And I appreciate that. And I can tell you that, looking around too, at, at some point in my three and a half years here, I've disagreed with somebody with every single one of their point of view at some time or another. So, the question is, what do I do about it? Well, I'm gonna address it in a professional manner. And I can disagree without being disagreeable. And I think that's the key, and that's my commitment. And I think we share that same kind of commitment. You know, when we disagree about issues, fine. But, you know, when we start getting to the point where you want to call somebody a name or, you know, oh, that's labeled idea stupid, ignorant. You start throwing out those labels, we've always, we've always been taught, labels hide people. You know, we have to remember each one of us here is entitled to our position, the point of view. And be respectful of it. And that's what, that's what my commitment is. And I'll close by sharing you with, we had a meeting this weekend. We have a bi- bi-annual, uh, church conference. And, uh, President of our church, this is a, a quote that I got from that meeting I thought was very appropriate considering the times in which we live. His name is, uh, uh, Russell M. Nelson. He said, "Despite contention all around us, one's home can become a heavenly place where study, prayer, and faith can be merged with love. We can truly become disciples of the Lord, standing up and speaking up for Him wherever we are." Those are the kind of things that lie within our power. You know, we start it within our homes. If we all commit to that and try to teach and help each other and lift each other up in our homes, we then take that same spirit with us out into the community. So, that's why I challenge all of us to try to do in our daily walk. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Don.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let's go out to the Mayor's Youth Council and Teen Court. Um, also, it also goes out to, I have a, um, a citizen that's in my ward. She celebrated a birthday and she turned a hundred and five years old. And it was a great experience to see her turn a hundred and five years old in my ward. Her name is Olamay Watts. And also, um, on tonight, my heart goes out to our youth. We have had a lot of tragedies in our community. And we also need to reach our youth. I thank the churches for reaching out and having prayer. But this goes beyond the church. This starts at the home. And when it starts at the home, you gotta go outside the walls of the church and go into our communities and encourage our youth. Because a lot of youth don't know their identities. They don't know who they are. And that's why we deal with this heavy spirit that we dealing with in the City of Douglas. So, my prayer is for our youth that we overcome these obstacles also. Also, I would like to commend Mr. Cassidy White on the Pack the Park Day at, uh,
Roundtree.
Roundtree Park a couple of Sundays ago. And it was a great time, and I had a great time. And also, on Easter Sunday, we would be having a community Easter egg hunt and a community Easter Pack the Park Day also on that day. So, we asked that you bring all your children out that'll Easter egg hunt, that'll eat hot dogs, jump on the bounce houses and everything else. And as Commissioner Gottlieb said tonight, as he said tonight, those things that we need to do, we need to be respectful. Some things we say aren't what a person is. It isn't who a person is. And I'm not that person that was displayed at the last commissioner's meeting that was said that I was. But I'm not that person. So, we need to be mindful of what we say. And we never know who's watching and who's, who's watching to see what is said. And I just want to say, my hands go out back again to y'all, to the Youth Mayor's Council. And adults, please take these youths under your wings. You never know what they're going through. Take time out to talk to them, see what they're going through. Parents, I keep saying this. I talked about this time. I got in confuses about crime. And I'm also talking about our youth because I am a, a man of evil. And my heart goes out to our young people because I know the struggles of life as a young person. So, if you don't mind, take time to talk to your child. Take time out to talk to someone else's child because they might not have no one that's in prison yet alive. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also like to say, uh, to the youth, welcome to the Youth Council. Thank y'all for taking time out of y'all busy schedule to learn more about the, um, City of Douglas. Um, also, thanking the citizens of Douglas that, uh, continue to clean their yards, um, gather junk that is not, you know, that they don't need. We have play junk days. Um, Ms. Henderson already has stated we're gonna have three junk days this month. So, please take advantage of that. And speaking of the youth, um, we have a lot of youth with suicide. And Mayor, not Mayor, but, uh, Chief, um, do y'all have an event coming up, uh, with the Police Department, um, with the youth, the, you know, uh, I was told yesterday. Anyway, but let's, um, let's, um...
I think Unison Behavioral Health has something coming up that is gonna be a, a focus on that, isn't it? Didn't I see something about that?
It was brought up in my...
May eighteenth.
May eighteenth, yes.
Unison and some other community agencies have a mental health fair.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, but thank you.
But, um, yeah, uh, we need to support that as our counselor here, you know, and things. Uh, whenever that event come up along with the, um, Chief, you know, and Police Department, um, they announcing in my church and I didn't get the whole event and everything. But let's get out and support that event when it come up with our youth because we have a lot of suicide with our youth, you know, and all.
Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you very much, Commissioner Pearson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as has already been stated, I would also like to commend our Youth Council. Thank you all for volunteering to participate to help make your community better because this is your community, okay? So, also, always be aware of that. You are being involved because you care about your community and you are to be commended for it. And Ms. Suarez, I say to you, uh, you keep your dream alive. If you want to be an attorney, you can definitely be one. Uh, immigration is a very, uh, important area to go into as well as criminal defense attorney. Uh, that was my dream one, one day when I was a, a young child to become an attorney. But I got, uh, didn't get into any trouble. But I just, I said I wanted a break from college. When I graduated with my, uh, bachelor's, I wanted to take a break. So, ended up getting married and having children, and the rest is history. So, when you got a dream, you stick to it. Don't let anything get in the way of it. So, don't take that break I took, okay? You keep going until you get it. And to all of you, keep your dreams high. To the thirteen-year-old, uh, you so little, I don't even see you back there. But, uh, you, you keep your dreams up too, sweetie. And I commend you as well for being, taking a part in this. Uh, Ms. Mayor, um, I'd just like to also remind the citizens about the junk drop-off. And I wanted to clarify that, that, um, they will have to get their belongings to the place because I had some citizens to ask. I told them I saw some stuff in their yard, sofas and stuff. And I was like, well, you can, you might get a ticket for that. And she was like, "I thought that, uh, the city would get it." And I was like, "No, they're not gonna get it. You've got to take it to, uh, the pole yard or wherever." So, we have some junk drop-offs going on. And at the pole yard, I believe, is that where all of the drunk, junk drop-offs are? Okay, so, yeah, if y'all have some, uh, things that need to be picked up from your houses, get it to, uh, our junk drop-off. Um, Mayor, is there gonna be an executive session tonight? Um, you mentioned personnel, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, my thing was this right here, as far as personnel, I think we need to turn it over to Mr. Davis first.
Okay.
That would be my issue.
I mean, we don't have any scheduled personnel.
Right, what we were talking about during the... So, I, I'll break, I, I can bring him on board with, with the complaint.
Right, that's what I was referring to, Mr. Davis.
Okay.
So, can we have an executive session?
But what I'll say is this right here, I think that we have to give staff the opportunity to resolve the issue first. And then we have a conversation about that.
Okay, that's fine. I just asked a question. I want it to be clear. That's why I asked. Okay, um, and I just think, you know, that Pastor, uh, who came to us tonight, Spivey, yeah. He, he, when he comes, he always gives us some very good words of wisdom. And, you know, he mentioned that God wants us to prosper. And when we work together, we can do that. But, you know, I, it's just amazing to me that in this day and time, the twenty-first century, instead of people who are now more educated than ever before working together, we seem to be so divided for whatever reasons. It's not only race. It's, I mean, people within their own races are divided as well. There's so much violence. My heart is just so troubled. And, and the young lady who was stated by, uh, school is a struggle. And she, I think that young lady might be in the ninth grade, I think, she said, at the, I'll turn, I'll turn to school. I'm not sure of the grade. But anyway, I just reflect back on my childhood growing up here in Douglas. And in the ninth grade, sixth grade, first grade, twelfth grade, those were the best years of my life. I had so much fun, you know? It was so enjoyable. And it's just so hurtful that nowadays our kids are going through so much that they're wanting to take their lives. A young man called me this morning and woke me out of my sleep because he had an issue with his stepdaughter who's now in Savannah because she had taken something. They didn't know what. And he was also calling because he had a complaint because the family was upset. And one of the siblings got a, got a ticket and took to jail because they didn't know how to handle that situation. Their, their loved one about to die, they're at the hospital. And it's, we have to have more patience, more love, more understanding, more compassion for everyone. We've just got to learn to do that. I know that the Bible speaks of end days, times get difficult. And people don't have love for one another. But I don't know, it just hurts my heart so. I just wish we could love better. And I just want to say right now that, you know, I've been here twenty years. Well, the end of this year will be twenty years. Mr. Mike, you said three and a half. I see a lot of times people don't count it right, how long they serve. You know what I'm saying? Because they get it mixed up when we're even at our parade. But our term on the City Council doesn't count from like day to day. You count each year individually. So, we are, those of you who's your first term, you're in three and a half years into your term. And I'm nineteen and a half in the mind. By the end of the year, it'll be twenty. But anyway, you know, I just, I just don't know what, what, what it's gonna take. But I just know that after our last meeting, I was, I was, I was troubled. I was troubled. Because I know in my heart, I don't have hate for anyone. But I was so hurt when, uh, Ms. McNeil stated, well, because I've read something on Facebook, and I don't even go on Facebook to Mr. Preston's page now. I don't even go there. Because every time I go there, there's something that's, that's hurtful, especially when I'm mentioned. Ye- yes, ma'am, you'll get a chance to, to speak back to me. Yes, of course. But I, I try not to even go there now. But the last time I remember going there, it was stated that by somebody in Ms. McNeil's ward, various people. I know Ms. McNeil better stand up to that Olivia Pearson. And I'm like, "Stand up to me? What, what does that mean?" But that's trying to sow discord, I think. I believe. I could be wrong. But anyway, and I said that to Ms. McNeil last week, other week. I was like, "Yeah, your constituents told you to stand up to me." And she was like, "No, no, they didn't. But they told me that they feel sorry for me for serving up here with you." Those were her words, that they told her they feel sorry for her for serving up here with me. And, you know, like I said, this is my nineteen and a half year. Ms. McNeil's third and a half year. I was here well before she came. She knew I was here. So, whatever made them say they feel sorry for her, I wish they would tell me what it is that they feel sorry about. And, and I'm sincere about this. I would really like to know. I mean, is it because I voiced my opinion? Is it because the sound of my voice? What is it? I haven't done anything that's, that was just hateful, not to my knowledge. But I, I just had to say that. But before I close, I want to say this. I want to say this. I want to apologize for behavior at our last meeting with me and her going back and forth. That was not called for, and I apologize for it. I'm, I'm a bigger person than that. I'm a better person than that. And I'm sorry I got caught up in that. We have too much to be concerned with here in the City of Douglas about making our city better to get caught up on little petty things. So, I apologize for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, that was, um, that was totally unexpected. And I appreciate and accept your apology. And I'd also like to s- to state, to just further state that the constituents of mine and the folks in the city and in this community feel sorry for any of us who have any, any animosity or any discord or anything that we have to deal with on a weekly basis. Because we have a lot of good things going on and we have a lot of other challenges that are bigger than, than sometimes our personal opinions or our private, um, interactions. And I think, um, I too am very sorry for, for the, um, the, the way things ended up and the way things, um, appeared to, uh, to the public. And I think that, um, we are truly strong women in our belief, in our faith, and what we want to do for the city.
Right.
I see the glass half-full. I will always be an eternal optimist, I believe. Um, and those of you who know me know that to be the case. Standing up for myself is, you know, that's been the accolades I've received this week or standing up for staff or whoever I feel is in the right because I'm like Commissioner Pearson. Uh, maybe her passion's growing on me. Maybe the mayor's assertiveness training. You youth, I think y'all have a great opportunity here. You've got a great leader. Let me say something. In fact, the, um, my comment about leadership is that a good leader knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way. And that's what our mayor's doing for you guys, okay? Not only you guys, but other young people that are coming up in this community. And I commend you, Mayor, on that, okay? Um, I'd also, like I said, we've got so many good things going on, um, so many wonderful opportunities to showcase our youth. opportunities to showcase our youth, their talent, their, um, our resources here. We've got very successful First Fridays going on in the evenings downtown. Our merchants love that. People are showing up and showing out, great food vendors and a lot of fun and activities. We've also got munching music going on and I commend the city years ago for having the foresight to do that. Um, we got some great talent there, Jordan Calhoun, Evie Woodward, show choir, um, got a lot of good folks doing those for people to go out and participate. And, um, I wanna thank you. I also wanna say something, Mayor, we've had some great ribbon cuttings this week. Downtown, you know, in the heart of Douglas, we had Becky's, you know, reopened under new ownership, uh, same wonderful location they've had for, I guess, twenty years or so. So what a commitment there. Um, make it personal, uh, got, you know, another lady located here. The other thing I wanna say is I wanna commend our airport and the staff we have there. I wanna encourage all of you to friend Mr. Jason Fuller and learn about the history of our airport and what's going on out there. Uh, city attorney and I were talking, or we were talking earlier before the meeting about what has just happened. Mr. Tom Riley, uh, that many of you know, was just awarded grand champion at the Fun and Sun or Sun and Fun, I'm sorry, I got that backwards, the Sun and Fun for his XP eighty-two aircraft. And, um, this is quite a, a very prestigious recognition. And he chooses to house this plane here in Douglas. This is great for us. This could lead to movies, this could lead to future good public publications and, um, and things coming to Douglas to learn more about us. So we wanna, we wanna highlight that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I enjoyed your article about the upcoming, uh, buildings we're going to have here in Douglas, Hobby Lobbies and, uh, several others that people are thrilled to death over when we can't wait to get that, uh, underway that will be for the future of Douglas. And when I mentioned Hobby Lobbies, somebody said, you won't ever get that here? I said, well, it's on the way, so, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's going to be great for Douglas, Chick-fil-A and other things. And and I do appreciate, along with others on the youth council, these young people taking their time, personal time to, uh, see and participate in, uh, reenactments of city commission meetings and what it all entails. And we thank you and we do appreciate the mayor, uh, taking time to bring that forth and that we, uh, has, uh, made a lot of progress, these young people. We need to get more of them involved that they could see what it's all about. And, uh, a lot of times we hear about things and the junk drop-off things, uh, I noticed, uh, some of the places that stuff piled up and why, I said, they won't pick that up, will they? I said, no, but, uh, they'll get somebody else to and come by there today and stuff has been picked up and and dropped off. And and people want to see things look good and, uh, keep, uh, they need to move those old junk cars and, uh, cause they're no good to them, the, I don't know that the people on the, uh, pickers is gonna come around and come buy them from them and take them up to Iowa and other things. But, uh, just, uh, make your place look good, be proud of it. We've even had a few people over the years come up here and complain about their neighbors not doing, uh, keeping their yards clean. So, uh, it's, it's just something that, take pride in whatever you do. And, uh, again, young people, we appreciate what you do and, uh, someday somebody will be sitting up here and, uh, somebody will be in other places. So, uh, make your voice known and, uh, and stand up and be counted and, uh, said when prayer goes up, said blessings come down. So that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, my comments are as follows, since, uh, Commissioner Moore brought up the, uh, Tykes Allocation District, um, I do think it's a, it's an opportunity for us, uh, to have a boom-boom effect all of a sudden. Uh, the people have been asking me what my opinion of it was. I said, well, actually, on November the fifth, my bosses go vote and that's what my opinion is going to be. And my opinion is irrelevant because the citizens of Douglas get to say yea or nay. If they say yea, I say yea. If they say nay, I say nay. Because that's not our decision as a council. Uh, that decision is too big for the seven of us and we have to put it on the ballot. Uh, that just gives us an opportunity to sit down with the developers and the investors to see if we can strike some type of opportunity. So, uh, we gotta be working with the city manager about releasing some more information, trying to get individuals to make a, an informed decision, an educated decision, not waiting to October to put this out there. Here it is, we released that, I believe, in early April. We have about six months to kick the tires on this thing, to investigate. Y'all go Google it, you know? Google it, do something, uh, educate yourselves on it. My next thing is the tanker. Uh, I was down there at Hawk Plaza slapping paint on walls and got a call about an overturned tanker, then immediately citizens started calling me, come by, hey, you know, there's an overturned tanker down here. I said, hey, that's why I'm not down there. That's why I'm not down there. Well, why don't you go down there and see? No, I don't have no hazmat training. Let them yahoos do that. Well, you you gotta know what's going on, I do, I have a cell phone, they calling me, they keeping me abreast, that's dangerous stuff down there. Did you see, they say stay away? So I'm staying away. The next thing is, uh, uh, my guidance counselor when I was in high school, Mr. George Pryor, I told him I had aspirations of being an attorney. And he said, you keep going the way you're going, you're gonna need an attorney. But it was amazing that, uh, a guy that I had no intentions of ever knowing in my life, uh, drill sergeant Running Bear, and he was about six-four, six-five, and, uh, when he talked, uh, you normally did what he said, uh, the military I was in, sometimes the drill sergeants had a way of persuading you. Now there's no touching, you know? Uh, had to get up off the ground a few times, popped off at the valve at inappropriate time. Uh, my next thing is this right here, is I tell citizens all the time, one of the reasons why I wanted to serve as the, uh, mayor of Douglas or in that capacity, I believe I shared with the young lady when we, uh, met over at the chamber. I actually wrote a, an article when I was in college about being a better person. And being a better person, uh, I think it's, uh, the second thing, I wanted to be a city commissioner, a county commissioner, or serve as the mayor. I wrote that in nineteen ninety-six. So write your dreams down. And one of the reasons why is I wanna be at that decision table. I don't wanna be a critic of the process. Everybody can be a critic. You know, Monday morning during football season, they shouldn't have threw that ball. Everybody knew that when, uh, Seattle was in the Super Bowl on the goal line, Marshawn Lynch both had got that ball. It, but if that play would've worked, we wouldn't be having that conversation. So I just wanna be at the table of these critical decisions to try to create an environment that is harmonious for all citizens of Douglas.
Yes, amen.
As I've said, everybody up here represents a large content, uh, constituency. You know, everyone up here represents about two thousand citizens, uh, each. I have the distinct pleasure of representing eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-six citizens. All my citizens are not pastors. Some of them like to take a little nip. Some of them like to hang out, some of them like to do this and some of them like to do that. Well, guess what? They get to live in this environment and we try to accommodate everybody and make sure that everybody is law-abiding. And sometimes the optics of it, and I want the youth council to pay particular attention to this, is the optics of our actions sometimes overwhelms the decision and the discussion that we are having. And remember that. Sometimes there are some very important issues that we are discussing and we sometimes may drown those out with the optics. One of the things I said earlier during the, um, executive session, as the mayor of the city of Douglas, I'm not always right. And it is not the objective for Tony Polk or Mayor Polk to be right. It's more important that this council be right than it is for me to be right. And I want everyone to understand this right here. We're all human.
Right.
There's nobody up here named Jesus, you know what I mean? We all make mistakes.
Right.
And one of the things I said as a leader, uh, you have to be able to talk to somebody. Our youth, uh, yes, it's trying to be a youth, it is, you have more access to information and and things like this right here. But guess what? Seventy years ago, they thought television was bad. You know what I mean? They thought Elvis Presley on the Ed Sullivan Show shaking his body was a bad thing. We shall all remember, uh, one of Dr. Martin Luther King's principles of nonviolence is that the true believer believes at the end that good will prevail. It will prevail. So I say this here to all our citizens, hey, it is a fun time to be in Douglas. In a few months, we're gonna have more construction going on, you can shake a stick in. City Hall, swimming pool, uh, the mar- uh, the, uh, Miracle Field, gonna put three or four, uh, football fields out there at Jardine Stadium, gonna put, uh, about, uh, five more baseball fields out there. We're talking to industries coming left and right. We're also looking at this new TAD, Tykes Allocation District. So there is a lot of things going on in the city of Douglas. And sometimes, you know, you just need to feel good about living in a small community that has so much to offer. When a citizen says, what's the biggest problem in the city of Douglas? I say, that's real easy. Real easy. You know what the biggest problem is in the city of Douglas? God has blessed us too much that the expectations of our citizens are enormous. We are a small community, eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-six citizens. We are never compared to Cairo, Georgia. We are never compared to a city our size. We are always compared to Tifton, three times our size. We're always compared to Valdosta. Valdosta State University has fifteen thousand students. They have more students than we have citizens in Douglas. But guess what? The leadership of this community doesn't say, no, we can't do it. What the leadership of this community does, let's figure out a way to do it. And this is what I wanna leave our youth council with in teen court. You're young, you're gonna make mistakes. Learn from those mistakes. Learn from, reach out and talk to somebody. If you can't talk to a counselor or the principal or a teacher, talk to your uncle, talk to your, your aunt, talk to your mama, talk to your parents, talk to your youth director, talk to somebody. Even as the mayor of Douglas, I reached out to members of the staff in the council to help guide me this weekend. I am not beyond asking somebody for help.
Right.
Okay?
That's it.
So at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn and I want the youth council to stand fast.
Come on.
It's the motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned.